Just meeting's order, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands unafinement under God in his business, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Michael Sharp. Step forward, please. First of all, let me thank you and your, uh, your crew for going to the aid of Randolph County.
Yes, thank you. How'd everything go?
It's going good. There's a lot of degree out there, so. But still got crews going up there. Um, probably finish out this week and kinda see where we stand at, but, uh.
I think it's important for us in these kinda situations to help as much as we can. You know, the next, next event may be in Wayne County.
Right. Yeah, they're very appreciative and I know they're shorthanded, so I think they got fourteen guys or something, so.
Much more.
Right.
Alright, well, thank you very much and, and please extend our appreciation to your, to your crew. What do you have for us today, Mike? We, we wanted to talk to you about the eclipse, right?
Yes.
So, you've been going to the meetings, I understand that?
Yeah.
EMA has, has organized and?
Yes.
And so. What's your understanding of?
Well, I got the email on the building closures and include the highway department, so just kinda curious. Um, obviously I didn't wanna go out and shut any roads down and we can't go out on the road to do any work that day, so didn't know if you wanted to keep us open, 'cause we're not really gonna be doing anything. I think our day shuts down at three o'clock, which that's right after the eclipse is gonna start. The total part of it would be right after that, so we'd probably be trying to get home during that part of it, so. I, my thought is, is to shut us down at noon like everybody else. We'll still be able to be on call for any situation that we'll go out and help with as normal.
So, so you would have certainly your folks take trucks home and?
Right.
Signage if you need to close.
And then depending on what it is, we can respond. You know, depending on what the weather is, you know, there's all kinds of factors that involve into that of what we need and so forth, but I think by being spread out, uh, at home or off, off our site, then we're able to respond well quicker at times to other areas, but I really, I don't wanna send anybody out that day just because we can't really close any roads down, so.
Do you think there's any need for, uh, for anybody to be at, at the headquarters to, in case there's equipment needed? They have to go there from?
We've got a lot of people that live in that Centerville, Centerville area.
Okay, so close by.
So they're very close to being there. I, I would hate to keep somebody there and then, okay, three o'clock, it's time to go home, do we wanna pay overtime or?
I think that's perfectly fine. Uh, it's probably a better situation that they can be deployed from home.
Be more responsive. When we talked, it was, you know, I, I, I think we all agreed that you could close at noon. I didn't think that was a question, unless you want them spread out.
The only question that is, what, what, how do we approach it if we need you for something?
Right, right. Well, we would come out just for any situation like we always do. Just, we were included in, HR called me before she sent the email out, said, well, you're not included. So, I just want clarification on that part of it, I guess.
I think it was one of those situations, we didn't wanna speak for you.
Sure.
You know, 'cause you're a critical part of this, something happens, we wouldn't make sure that.
No, we would be prepared, just like always. I mean, we always have people on call where we can respond and so forth. I just, I know I gotta keep them in the garage, we gotta do something in the garage, 'cause I don't wanna send them out on the roadways that day. I think the biggest part of it is gonna hit probably when everybody's trying to leave after three o'clock, though.
Four, five, six o'clock, yeah.
So that's when it's gonna hit, we're not gonna be at work anyway, so.
Okay. So, if, if we're agreed on that, why don't we, because, because your people are by our, our definition of our employee handbook, uh, their, their essential personnel, let's take a, a vote to approve your plan, close at noon, but here for emergencies.
I so move.
Okay. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Mike.
Yeah, I, I haven't.
Okay.
I do have a request. Are you going to the eclipse meeting tomorrow?
Yes.
Um, I heard, um, the tourism's, uh, new PR person, uh, on, uh, the air this morning, and there was no encouragement for people to not leave immediately. In fact, it was kinda like, well, if you wanna leave right after that, that's your business. Apparently, there is really no strategy, uh, for the eclipse committee to try to encourage people to not all leave at once. Um, and has there been any discussion in the eclipse meetings to discourage people leaving all at once?
Well, I mean, I, obviously they don't want it, but I think the way that group is, as meeting, we're not the ones that are putting on the extra activities to try to keep people here. That's not our job as far as trying to keep people here, as.
There's been discussion about it, but again, history has shown that is the biggest problem, that mass access.
Right, but the communications to the public, I would think would be a part of the eclipse committee's strategy as the communication to the public.
I think they're trying to get people to stay out there, but history has shown.
That, that was not the message that was going out from tourism today on the radio.
Yeah, I don't.
I would just hope that at that last meeting tomorrow, there could be a last, that the last message that goes out is, hey folks, stay at your viewing side, you know, don't be in any hurry to get back home, you know, if.
And I don't know if EMA's put anything out, uh, publicly on any of it. You know, I, I don't know that they're.
Tourism, I think.
Right, so the tourism, I guess, would be the more ones to say, hey, here's the activity that's gonna be happening afterwards, please stay or hang around. I think the way the EMA and people look at it is, it's not the sheriff department or the EMA's job to try to keep people in place, because they can't have that ability. We're just gonna have to try to work the crowds as they leave and, and try to work it from that standpoint, I think. They just felt like it's not, you know, we're not gonna be putting on a, whatever activity there is after the eclipse to hold them there.
I'm just asking if there's any way that you can do preventative road management here? If you, if, if it could be conveyed, are you on that committee?
I've been going to the meetings, yeah.
Has there been any discussion about trying to communicate an encouragement for people to not all leave at once?
There's been talk about it, but I, I just.
The tourism has been at those meetings also, so I think they know the standpoint. I think that was able to discuss at the last meeting, that, that we're not putting on the activities or trying to hold them there. That's more of the tourism's department, that they should be trying to promote that rather than the sheriff department or the EMA.
All I'm saying is that that, that is not being communicated as of today. It's a spokesperson. I, I just think that oughta be.
Mary Walker needs to have, and.
Well, and, and you two are gonna be there tomorrow.
Yes, on the Tourism Bureau Board.
I'll talk to Mary Walker about it after.
And she's been at those meetings that we were at.
I was just, I was so glad that there was, you know, somebody in Eric, it was on Eric Marsh's, uh, program at eight o'clock this morning, and there was no call for people to be in no hurry to get on the road.
Well, I, I don't think it will have much impact, but I will talk to her about it.
Well, at road school, they said the most important thing you can do is to keep people from leaving all at once.
Right.
And, and to try to do that.
Have events.
Towns and others have scheduled events, and they have done that in.
They're all in advance.
And I think as we watched some from, when it was in Kentucky or Tennessee, wherever it was, in two thousand seventeen, you know, they tried to do the same thing, but yet people were gonna leave. Some people were smart enough to say, hey, we're gonna take the back roads, we're gonna try to find other ways, or we're gonna hang around a little bit, but it's, it's kinda up to that person what they're gonna do, and then I don't. And if a lot of people are coming in from out of town, you're not gonna have that communication anyway. You know, they're not around here to do that. Most people that are in this area that's gonna hear that pre-communication, they're not, they're already living here and they're probably gonna be at their home.
Well, but there's still time to have some kind of activity after three o'clock on the eighth. There's, it's always all in advance.
I don't know if it is, because it's the weekend.
Yeah.
Okay. What else have you got here?
So, quality controls, who's been doing the ponds at the industrial park? So I've got a contract there, Delwin's been doing it for the last several years. Um, it's the two north ponds that we concentrate on for weed control and things like that inside the pond. So, this contract, um, for two, twenty twenty-four would be three thousand three hundred ninety-three dollars and six cents if it's paid by April first. Um, last year, it, it's gone up about two hundred and eighty dollars and thirty-three cents from what it was last year, but.
This says three thousand four hundred and eighty dollars.
Well, if you, you get a discount if you pay by April first. Yeah, it's on the back, top line. So if you pay by April first, then that's what the price would be.
Okay, so your motion is to pay the thirty-three ninety-three oh six by April the first?
Probably by credit card, be sure.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. I have a second for you.
And then, and one copy, I'll give, I'll keep in my file and then I'll give a copy to Bobby for the payment. Um, second would be, Delwin had called me, they would like to close Milton Street, um, which is, part of it's the county, part of it's in the city. Got a couple maps. Uh, so it'd be from Foundry Road up to the city part. So, Foundry Road. So from Foundry Road to here right past the skating rink, this is our section, and then Delwin has this section. So, on April eighth, they would like to have that street closed. They're trying to not have people go to the parks and park and, I don't know if they're gonna be able to walk, but they wanna close the street so there's no damage they're afraid of.
Traffic control and problems in that area.
They'd like to close that street, which part of it is ours, so kinda come in to you for their permission to be able to close our section of that street. Um, if you don't, then they're gonna close it from their part back, so, uh, then people are gonna get down there and they're not gonna know where to go. So, if you're fine with that.
I don't know, I might be motion that we approve the closer, closing of Foundry Road from the section that's ours.
I'll second the motion, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. And then, are you gonna provide them with signage?
I think they got their own signage and so forth. If not, we will help them, yes. Um, and then, they would also like to close it, another person called me, but would like to close that same section on July twenty-seventh, which is a Saturday. They're having like a, I don't know what they call it, maybe a town fair type of thing, it's gonna be kinda at this, at the skating rink, but they're wanting to use that street to put vendors and stuff on, so they'd like to close it on July twenty-seventh.
So moved. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries.
And then Lincoln High School has contacted me, they would like to close parts of Delaware Street on April seventh. They're having a five K run, uh, on that, it's, it'd be a Sunday before the eclipse. I think part of the, one of the functions that they're gonna be doing before, not after, of the eclipse, that they're wanting to close parts of the section, they do the same thing, I think, a couple times during the year, they have different five K runs.
Which part do they close?
I don't know for sure exactly which part. It's somewhere around the elementary school. I've never, I haven't ran it, so I'm not for sure what parts.
Are you gonna run this year?
No, I'm not planning on it, but. We normally take signs over for them to be able to close those sections of roadway, so they'd like to do that, so.
Close any church services?
Just for a couple hours?
Yeah, yeah, I think it'd be Saturday morning during their five K run part.
Move for approval.
Their motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries.
And then along those same lines, I don't know that they're really gonna close the road, but on Elliott Road up there at the High Point on April eighth, um, Ed Pollak, I've been in a discussion with him, they would kinda like to barricade it, let people through, but they kinda wanna get one-way traffic going, so they wanna put a couple people each in, one's at Randolph County Line, one would be at, uh, Buffle Road, and try to get people to come in one way and go out one way because of the road conditions. They're expecting a higher attendance at the High Point, uh, in Wayne County during the eclipse. Some of the people coming in for the eclipse may be going to the High Point for, whether during the eclipse or after, but.
Better view from that, that.
That's right. It's the closest seating.
Well, it's actually in a wooded area, so you're not gonna see very well, but.
You don't even see much of the wood, so.
But they think there may be a higher capacity of people going to look at the High Point since they would be in this area, so.
Geo-physical fans.
Um, I wouldn't say that actually, we're not actually closing the road, but they like to barricade it to try to get the traffic to flow one way and put people out there to get them to flow right, if that's okay with you guys.
Good luck.
It's kinda out there, so I don't think they're gonna be a major traffic jam issue per se for, you know, it's not one of the main roads.
Well, that may be an emergency call for you.
Yeah.
So, if that's okay, I'll.
If it's muddy.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve, uh, any further discussion?
People are gonna flock to the High Point.
Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries.
And then I have one sign. This would be on Cook Road. Uh, this was a stop ahead, so the way that sits, uh, when you pull up on Cook Road, coming up to state line, you couldn't see the stop sign and the way the trees are and so forth. So, the way the ground is, if we move the stop sign out some, it's gonna be taken out by semi, by farmers. So, we thought to put a stop ahead sign up there rather than trying to move the stop sign to make it more visible.
There's not currently a stop ahead.
There's not currently a stop ahead, but placing a stop ahead there, for your records.
How, uh, how far in advance of the stop sign is it?
It's normally typically like three, four, three to five hundred feet, somewhere where they put those stop ahead signs at.
Move for approval.
We have a motion and a second to approve the placement of a stop ahead sign on Cook Road. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Is that proposed or in favor?
Aye, no, in favor.
In favor, okay.
Then the last thing I got, this would be a notice to public, kinda do this every year. So this is just, uh, continue our weed spray brush cutting programs. Um, and we just kinda do this every year to kinda get the public notice of our weed spraying. We don't spray Total Kill in yards, so if it's a mowed area, we don't spray that, but we typically will spray along, uh, the road signs, uh, that aren't, not in the yards, um, and then around guardrails and stuff like that. And then, a lot of times in the wintertime, we have a brush cutting program or throughout the year that will cut brush, and this just gives them an opportunity to opt out of that, but they still have to maintain their property. So this is kinda standard, what we've done for years, but, uh, makes it official and puts it on the books for everybody.
Okay. Questions? Do we have a, uh?
Motion to approve?
Second. Motion and a second. Further discussion? Motion, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries.
That's all I have, unless you have anything else?
Anything, no relief from road school?
Um, no. There, there were some good classes on some of the eleven, seven, the restricted and unrestricted parts and, and things like that, and some other areas, but, uh, it's always, I wish we had some other things, but.
Any hope, uh, expressed or, um, discussions regarding the significant increase in construction costs that are, or any hopes of getting some relief on the eighty-twenty match from federal?
Yeah, it really wasn't named the classes I was in, it didn't come up in much discussion, but, uh, just talking outside of the class to a lot of the peers and so forth, that, yeah, there's a lot of concern with what the rising crowds are doing to all the counties.
Prices all over the states, all over the, all over the country.
Right.
Are facing this crisis because of the, I mean, it's huge increases over what was bid.
Right, right. And our prices for what I deal with, um, we're still kinda in line on some of that. I think a lot of it affects Brandon way more than what it does me on the bridge cost and so forth, so. I think most of ours are done in-house, so our supplies for asphalt and gravel and things like that have stayed intact and hasn't gone way out of whack yet on that end of it, so we're blessed for that. But by us doing everything in-house, uh, hasn't really helped us part, but I know, I think as contractors go, some of those pricings have gone up quite significantly for some other counties that do not do it in-house.
How big can a culvert get? Yeah, we are, uh, there, there again, that's a good point, we.
Nineteen foot, eleven inches.
How, how big?
Nineteen foot, eleven inches.
That's huge.
Yeah. Eleven and a half, eleven, three quarters. Anything over twenty foot and bigger is a bridge, so.
Okay.
It's gotta be under twenty foot.
Under twenty, but that has saved us so much, you know, we are so fortunate, just, I don't think there's any county that does any more work than Wayne County, that has saved us from these price hikes. So, we're probably gonna be hurt less than most, but I'll bet there was a lot of talk about this.
Right.
Outside the sessions.
Right.
But I was just hoping there was a glimmer of, uh.
Haven't seen it yet.
No glimmers, so let us know if there's a glimmer of hope.
Right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Brandon.
Just wanna say real quick, I really appreciate the commissioner's help, along with the council and the auditor, for helping us get that, uh, invoice checked to Endot last week, and we had a couple, uh, special meetings and whatnot. We really appreciate your help on pushing that forward. Um, what, I've got one thing before you this morning. Um, it is for the Bridge Seventy-Six on Sample Road. Uh, we are ready to submit our final tracings plans set to Endot to, to gear up for the letting in July. Uh, we've reviewed the plans, they're in line with our expectations of the project. Um, so I would recommend approving the plans and that, there's a signature page on the front sheet, title sheet for you.
Okay.
Letting in July?
As of now, yes.
So you have reviewed the plans and they meet your exacting standards, and we're in good shape to proceed, right?
That is correct.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the plans for the Sample Road Bridge. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries.
Okay, that's all I have, unless you have other questions?
Any questions for Brandon?
What was your take on road school?
Um, a lot of interesting classes. Um, I attended several of the environmental side of the Endot projects or federal projects. There's a lot involved in all the NEPA requirements and whatnot, which has been delaying projects in the province of state, because there's just so much involved with it. But, uh, I attended several of those to try to help maybe streamline some of our stuff if we come into similar situations, so. A lot of good information.
No glimmer of hope on financial relief?
I, I did not see any classes specifically pertaining to that, or I would have joined them, but.
Well, let's hope it's forthcoming.
No glimmer yet.
That infrastructure plan, surely we could just fill a little bit our way, would be nice.
Yes, it would be helpful.
Alright, thanks, Brandon.
Thank you.
So, Tim, so, let's skip ahead to Ron. What have you got for us today, Ron?
Nothing, uh, that need require action on. Uh, maybe for information, uh, do you know when the caucus may be held to replace?
I think I heard it was eight.
Second?
That's what I thought I heard.
So, that, we got a couple, we gotta modify our schedule, but obviously now the company, six, six, four sessions. We'll do that.
Okay.
We have, I think there's at least one more.
Council tonight to that.
Okay. So we do have several, uh.
Yeah, I think.
Several of the memorandum of understanding or the interlocal agreements, uh, are those on the agenda for tonight? If we'll chop to complete, we've already approved some of them, but I think we've approved all of them.
Not all of them.
We can, we can do that tonight. Council, uh, has to approve those, is what I want. Okay, thank you, Ron.
Which ones are those, by the way?
Uh, let's see, there's, there's Milton, East German Town.
Being our locals.
The only, I think the only, uh, the only memorandum of understanding is the YMCA, which does not go to council, right? Just, just goes to commissioners, and which we already did. I was gonna say, we didn't leave that last week. Tim, Jeff, we're ready for you. Come on up.
Where do you wanna sit up? Here's the podium, please.
Now, that's a podium built for two.
I guess.
It is.
Morning. Good morning. So.
Morning.
We want to, uh, revisit your proposal on, uh, on houses for Bridges for Life as we move forward in the, in the process of taking ownership of some of these properties. And also to talk about, uh, your, your business model, uh, what's it gonna take for you to move forward? And just give us and give you a chance to explain it, uh, to the, to the community as well as to commissioners to kinda refresh our memories of where we're headed with this and what your ideal circumstances would be. So, take it away.
Shall we begin? Well, first, we're just maybe kinda open to get us, to get us going here, and we'll let you be in charge of the time aspect of things.
Sure, go right ahead.
Keep us on track, so. But as kind of a reminder, uh, we had the Building Together program. One of the really important pieces of it, there's a lot of vital aspects of how it's gonna work, but one of the important pieces is that it has this sustainability piece built into it, which involves, at the very beginning of kind of when we put the program together, this, this dollar amount of the five hundred thousand was what represented, uh, an investment that took it to that point of sustainability, which would be after like a five-year period. So if, under that type of funding support, what happens is that, at the end of the five years, there's been ten houses that would have been done and forty individuals that would have been in the program, graduated out, and hopefully all working in successful in the building trade. So, that five-year plan is what, is, is kinda what the whole, uh, concept was, was to get us to that sustainability piece. Because the program has the graduates of the program, they become renters. So then the rental income then keeps this thing moving, so we can then go beyond ten properties and go beyond forty individuals. So, um, so that, that's just kind of a quick review of where we were at. And, and, you know, we've said with you guys a number of times, and you're all such great advocates of the program, and we, we want to make sure you know how much we appreciate it, 'cause it is something a little different. Uh, that's what's great about it, it's a little different, and, um, there's so many neat aspects of it. So we thank you for your continued support. Now, we know we, there's been a little shift in kind of the funding opportunity and where that's at, so we have really put some time into kinda thinking through, how do we adjust with that? What can we do to still try to get to a sustainability point as quickly as possible? But obviously, you know, as we shorten, as the funding comes down, the sustainability piece is compromised at some level, but we're still trying to work through it the best we can. And then when it comes to the properties themselves, these properties that are gonna be in the program have to be kinda very specific to meet the need of what we're looking for. So it's kinda trying to fit all this together in a way that makes sense. And so, but I guess the main thing, and we don't wanna take anything for granted, is to feel confident that you guys do still feel like you wanna support the program, that you're still a fan of Building Together, and that you're still on board with it. Uh, 'cause I know we are, for sure. We talk about it every day, so we're always excited about it. Uh, but we wanted to just kinda make sure today that was one of the things to accomplish, is that we do feel that you're still on board. We know the levels are gonna change and all of that, and that's understandable. But we wanna feel that way, and I assume that's it, but we didn't wanna take that for granted today.
I, I think you're absolutely correct. Um, but just to be clear, and for people who might be hearing about this for the first time, Bridges for Life is the organization, the five oh one C three organization, and Building Together is this specific one program that is under the umbrella of Build, uh, Bridges for Life.
Yeah, correct. Yeah, good clarification, yeah.
Okay.
So, um, I guess to kind of expand upon for our viewing audience, this is the kind. So, um, I guess to kind of expand upon for our viewing audience, this is the concept of Building Together. We would take homeless people or people that are, have come out of programs, um, or perhaps just are coming out of incarceration, and teach them the building trades, they would make twelve dollars an hour, they would go through a very specific curriculum so that all aspects of building would be taught to them, they'd be a very hands-on program, um, on a daily basis. There'd be about an hour of classroom time, um, life skills are certainly a major focus in teaching these individuals how to not only be carpenters, but to be really good employees and be really good citizens. We want to change the trajectory of their life for good, so they don't go back into homelessness or addiction or any other number of things. That said, the program, um, during the time of their tenure, which is six months, will prepare them and also expose them to various other business owners in the community that will be attracted and are already stepping up to be part of this program. They want to actually come on site, DB Plumbing, uh, for example, is very interested in working right by our side and essentially overseeing the plumbing and electric side of this, which should bring the cost down somewhere. So that is a huge, huge benefit to everyone concerned, not only are they then acting kind of as apprentices to DB, but they have a path immediately upon completion of the program, so things are really coming together as far as that's concerned. Each employee will help pay their rent, they will be moved into housing right away, so they will pay a portion of that, and in addition to that, they will be spending fifty cents an hour of their pay to develop a set of tools that by the time they leave the program, they will be tooled up and ready to go. So that in a nutshell is Building Together.
Uh, you mentioned DB Plumbing, are there other, uh, contractors that you've been talking to that are, are interested in partnering with you?
We had a conversation with, uh, a local union steward as well, similar type of thing, that, um, whose interest was piqued in the idea, as we can all imagine, of someone who has went through a program like this, uh, to become a pretty qualified skilled labor, labor person, which we know there's sh- quite a shortage of. So he was also very interested in, and a couple other small feelers out there, people that, I, I know once the project is going, just from their standpoint, you can see why it would be appealing, uh, to have an individual who's completed this, 'cause it's gonna be a very thorough. I mean, Jeff, uh, has written this, uh, curriculum, a six-month curriculum, that's based upon his, um, you know, nearly thirty years or more of experience of doing this, and so, it's, it, for us, it's most exciting because we are, we're able to put the names and faces with this. You know, when it's, when it's conceptual and you just think, okay, there's some person out there that this might work for. But for us, having worked with a number of people that, when placed into this program, we, we know that they have the, uh, skill level that's already gonna make them a qualified candidate, and then the path they're gonna get on out of this is, is, is just very, very exciting, so. Uh, yeah, so it's, uh, it'll be great, but we expected a lot of, uh, community support and partnerships, for sure.
How many people do you have currently waiting to start their program?
Well, we haven't been able to, let me kind of come around and answer your question, so, we haven't been able to officially say, obviously, right, here's when the start date is, here's when it is, so, but we have a number of individuals, I mean, a half a dozen or less, that are guys that are potential candidates, uh, I know Jeff had one in the car with him the other day, and as they're kind of driving around, he's just asking construction questions about this building and that building, he's got a little, uh, quiz, if you will, that kind of helps to identify pretty quickly, do they have the skill set? And there's a number of guys that, um, maybe have acted like they knew what they wanted, that they knew a little bit more than what they did, and then some who really surface with quite, quite some skills in place, so, we anticipate we'll be able to grab that first class of four pretty quickly.
Oh, yes.
And, um, and we'll have a vet, there'll be a vetting process at the beginning, uh, before we officially put them in the program. But, yeah, we'll be able to get Class One up and running really quickly.
And Class One obviously, um, would be most affordable if they could reside in the first, um, project house.
Indeed.
And, um, as a result of that, um, you have examined the properties that are up for sale and the commissioner's deed sales scheduled for April, what is the date of that, Steve?
Twenty-fourth of April.
April twenty-fourth, so between now and April twenty-fourth, we need to have final disposition of what happens to those few properties. There used to be a lot more properties, maybe people are paying their property tax at a greater rate, um, but, um, you identified four properties that you felt, uh, especially two of them could be, um, uh, rehabbed in a, not, if not rapid, at least more rapid than some of the other deed properties that would take quite a while and more costly. Uh, so let's talk about those four properties that you not only identified, but also prioritized with the New Paris Pike property being your priority number one. Um, and, and we recognize that you have not been able to get inside to really identify, uh, that, but, uh, your second priority, we've kind of, uh, earmarked as potential transfer to the city of Richmond that could then transfer to you as a not-for-profit five oh one C three bridges, uh, for this educational program that could be funded under the guidelines of restricted funding because, uh, the majority of your, uh, students would be former victims of opioid use disorder. You're confirming that, Steve?
Correct, yes, correct.
Some may have multiple, uh, substance use disorder, um, uh, histories. Opioids are, that, I just need to clarify that opioid use disorder is often, if not always, what would be in the past of your clientele.
For sure, for sure.
Because when we first started talking, we were looking at American Rescue Plan dollars, which would not have opioid, alcohol, meth, any kind of restrictions at all, but, uh, now we're looking at the opioid settlement funds, which does have that opioid use history required.
Yeah.
Now, the other two properties, and I need clarification on this, what is the history? Perhaps someone in the room can explain why the, um, EDC and Habitat for Humanity is penciled in as the possible recipients of the other two priorities that you identified as po- potentially quickly restorable for the Building Together program, Steve?
What are, what are the other two first? Is it fourteen forty-five Hunt Street is one of them?
Yeah.
Yeah, could you?
Cross Hall is, is another, and then ten eleven North fifteenth is one of them, or what's your fourth?
Uh, ten twenty-eight Butler.
Ten twenty-eight.
That's number three?
That's number four.
Number four, okay.
Ten twenty-eight.
Which actually has two, two buildings on that property, so, it's a.
And one might be occupied, you can't tell.
Yeah, we kind of wonder, there's a light on it.
So, that and by all accounts, seventeen Cross Hall.
Steve, you know how EDC and Habitat got in, in the mix with that, those other two properties?
Because of, uh, I, I don't know how Habitat, uh, and I think it's just.
You're talking to Sarah Mitchell about which of these properties might have a reuse.
And it came into the conversation at the same time we were having the blight conversation for that program.
And, and these are not necessarily blight candidates, either of those two properties?
No, these are ones that.
And Sarah Mitchell would guess.
Somebody would, would hopefully rehab and, and put them to reuse, but.
And Sarah probably didn't know about Building Together at the time.
Well, she did, but the, the issue is not, in my view, uh, how many people have, have requested the properties. We commissioners will decide whether we're going to, how we're gonna dispose of them, whether they go into the sale, whether we give them to, uh, to Bridges, uh, or the, the Building Together program, or whether we give them Habitat or somebody else, no, nobody else has requested them.
I just didn't know if Habitat had requested and what the history was.
They have, they have.
It's just been this asterisk Habitat.
They have requested that.
Habitat has? And that's why they were considered?
Correct, that's why it's on this list, but again, it's our decision to make, now.
Well, sure.
Part of the question becomes, if we give them to the city to transfer, and can we, can we say we'd like to, to give these to the city for you to transfer to a specific organization? What's the, I mean, what's we give them to the city, that's up to the city?
Steve, help, refresh my recollection, I think we can, we can transfer property directly for agricultural, educational, or recreational purposes.
And so for.
Interesting, well.
So for Building Together, we can, we can say it is an educational.
As a highly educational.
So we don't need to go to the city?
I don't think the city's.
These we could transfer.
For this entity, I don't think.
Direct, you got your five oh one C three?
Yes.
Bridges for Life does.
Yes.
Does, and Building Together is not a separate entity, it's part of your.
Correct.
It's just their initiative under, under their.
Yeah.
Correct, so I think we have that option to do that directly.
I think that's the.
If we could avoid the city, that would be good.
And we decide, you know, who we're gonna give them to in this case, and then, and then, uh, the, for Habitat, uh, it would not be an educational purpose.
No, I think, I think we need the city as a conduit, so I, I think whatever your decision, I think there needs to be somewhat, uh, communicative, not collaborative, with, with, uh, Sarah and the people in the city.
Okay, okay.
Well, she's EDC, not sitting there.
She's heading up there.
She's, she's working with the city on, on several fronts, but yeah, she is employed by the EDC. And then, and then the one, uh, ten eleven North fifteenth that's listed for the housing authority, that's a vacant lot, is it not, Steve?
I believe so.
Steve?
Yes.
It is a vacant lot?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, again, in, in rank order, if you have listed at number one, the New Paris Pike property, which we also have a request, uh, from the owner's son to, for them to be allowed to redeem that property, so, we'll discuss that later. But, that's your first choice, second choice is twelve seventeen Cross Hall Street?
Fourteen forty-five Hunt.
Okay, fourteen forty-five Hunt is your second choice, where does Cross Hall come in?
Fourth.
Fourth, and then the third choice?
Ten twenty-eight Butler.
Ten twenty-eight Butler. And that's because it has two properties on it, right?
Correct, yeah, yeah.
More for your Butler, on that?
Yes.
Okay. So. Go ahead. Which one is a duplex?
That's Hunt.
That is not, so.
Yeah, that one's.
Preferably then, so Hunt Street, number two or three are the most, you're gonna get the biggest bang for your buck.
Yes, sir.
Because you have four.
Exactly.
So, Ron, assuming that, that we're agreeing, and I think that's where we're at right now, with a couple of exceptions here, we're gonna agree to take title to these properties.
Probably when I'll put them in the detail.
Correct, but my point.
Take title.
My point being, if we take title, can we then immediately allow these guys to get into those houses to do a little more thorough investigation?
Depends on whether they're occupied or not.
Okay. You know, that might be.
That's a good point. By humans.
And they understand they would have to pay for the title search, we, we really shouldn't give them, um, access until we complete the title search, and they understand that we wouldn't be donating that.
If it's already been done, should have been.
Oh, the title searches have been done, okay, and I, in all the discussions I've had with that Building Together, I've never, um, offered for the county to pay for those title searches, and they understand that.
If we give them other money.
Then we can be right.
Why aren't we taking our money back for the pay for it?
I mean, that would be a small percentage of what.
Twenty bucks and then pay it back to us. Okay, so we'll work that out, but, um, so what steps would we need to, to go through to identify whether we can get them into the properties? I mean, here's my concern, they've looked on the outside, but if they actually get into it, they may say, whoa, that's in pretty bad shape, I would rather have this other property instead of that one.
Well, we'll, we'll just, we will accept the tax deed that is issued to us from the court, we will be the owners, they can enter with our permission, they know their limitations, if there are people in there, they're gonna have to use, e- at minimally, uh, police or judicial process to make them vacate if they claim they have an interest. But other than that, you know, and then if, once they come back to us and confirm, then we just have a public meeting and authorize the conveyance based on the statute, you know, I have a resolution for that, and if, you know, depending on their pace, we argue to do several in one resolution or all, depending on.
Okay.
Now, the, the funding is still, got me confused, so, I mean, is this city and?
This would just be the county.
Just the county.
Of the opioid settlement funds, um, to, to support the program and purchase of.
Purely opioid, and we're not worried about ARPA, yes?
Correct, opioid funding. So, and that's why I'm thinking, if you can get into the buildings, you can give us a better sense.
Love that.
I mean, I think it can be pretty fast tracked, uh, obviously, you know, after April twenty-fourth.
Okay, okay, so, again, um, we will, we will have the conversation later.
Actually, I think the deeds are gonna issue, when are the deeds issued, Steve?
Today.
Today or tomorrow?
Today, yeah, the, the court called yesterday and Selina's holding up until after our meeting today to, to determine, there's a couple on here that we further wanna talk about.
Okay, well, it's, yeah. So we don't even need to wait until twenty-fourth, we'll pull them out of the deed filing, yeah, so as soon as we get titled, then we start the process.
Okay. Certainly after today, but maybe the deed could be. Um, so, what else do you think is important for us to know as we continue down this route?
I guess the question I have is, we initially, when we were looking at the millions in ARPA, that's how far back this goes, we started talking about this before ARPA commitments had been made. Um, uh, we do not have five hundred thousand dollars in opioid settlement funds. Uh, the twenty twenty-three distribution has been made, the twenty twenty-four distribution is just a very small partial, only about twenty-two thousand dollars of twenty twenty-four's distribution has been made, and who knows when the remaining twenty twenty-four distribution will be forthcoming? So there's only like two hundred and fifty thousand dollars available from twenty twenty-three, um, in, um, restricted. And you've seen Exhibit E, everything as you described of Building Together is eligible from a treatment, education, saving lives, all that sort of thing, you meet all of the qualifications under restricted funding, and of course unrestricted as well, but of that, um, that remains in the restricted, uh, fund and the new, um, two hundred and forty-three thousand that we just received this month in restricted, uh, in a, the maximum in restricted is about two hundred and fifty thousand, and I think there's a desire to maybe hang on to the unrestricted funding of this group.
I think so.
For expressions of, uh, unrestricted grants that are probably gonna be coming our way.
And my thought here is, this is, this is the perfect opportunity for you to have a demonstration project that allows you to kind of ease into this process, uh, we can, we can give you a couple of these houses that, that best meet your needs. There's funding in the opioid settlement, uh, the exact number to be determined as we move forward here a little bit. But, you know, over the next six months then, as you implement it, you can build your partnerships. you can build your partnerships, uh, we can.
Yep.
You can test drive this thing, see where you might need to make adjustments and how this is gonna work. And then we can talk about round two. Um, so let's, let's demonstrate to the community that this works, and to the, to the contractor community that these are folks now that have some skills, that they're employable. And I think it's a win-win all around, dependent on your success. I don't want you to be overwhelmed by this, I want to build this road around.
Yeah, and I think talking to you, you prefer, if, if at all possible, startup to have two properties.
Yes.
Simultaneously.
Correct, yep. I just think that's gonna give us economies of scale. You just get greater efficiency, there's more flexibility. Any contractor is gonna want the option to move people where the day kind of warrants, where the weather warrants, where they can get the greatest efficiency. And certainly in this case, and it's the biggest deal, is where you can maintain, uh, a fluidity of their learning experience. So having two, two properties definitely helps the program.
Two properties, but actually if we, if we give you your second and third choices, it's, it's three properties and four total.
Yes.
Living units.
That's a win.
So.
Yeah, and that's, I, I think that's the way we wanna go, we need to.
Great, that's, I'm excited.
Okay. Anything else you wanna share?
Excited to go through the properties and, uh, certainly thank you for the great wisdom that you exercise in every aspect of the way you run this. Um, I don't think I'd wanna sit in your seats because I've had plenty of time to examine what you must go through on a daily basis, but we certainly appreciate it.
Well, you're welcome. Come on, we make the big buck, right? No doubt about it. Um, okay, so we'll, we'll work through this process, we'll, we'll keep in close touch. Hopefully, um, in the next week or so, we'll be able to see if we can get you into, uh, those two properties and.
Fantastic.
Get started.
Because there might be a glitch in one of them that we need you to move on to. Glitches happen in construction. Well, we really appreciate.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Appreciate you having this idea and really being willing to.
Excited for this to get started.
Yes, Mr. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
You should patent it. In time, right?
Okay. Surveying, there's Rob Clark.
I don't know if Ron was finishing off.
Yeah, he was. Come on in, Rob, you're up.
All right, I'm up.
Now, is this, is this a modern version of that stick you used to hold out in the, out in the field?
No, that would be the prison.
Cause I'm gonna say, you know, you don't even have to hold this stick up. It's got legs and everything.
Yeah, well, you gotta hold it level.
Thank goodness you're well, you know, you're not quite there.
Right.
Hey, Rob, happy National Surveyors Appreciation Week.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Really?
Yep.
This would've told me, I would've brought a cane.
We appreciate you every week of the year, of course, but this is the National Recognition Week.
That's awesome. Next year, let me know ahead of time.
All right, I'll, I'll, I'll print the proclamation and put it on your desk.
I wasn't shy about telling everybody it was my birthday a couple of years ago. You don't have to be shy about National Surveyors Day. Go ahead.
All right, well, what you have in front of you is a quote, "To replace this unit here, which is called a Rover." This, this unit here is, is nice when it's a clear sunny day, no clouds in the sky, no buildings. Going in the woods, it's, it's real difficult. Um, in the summertime, when the leaves are on the trees, forget it. You just gotta wait. Um, in fact, when we did the survey on Clyde Morley Road, we had to tie into one of the cornerstones that really wasn't that far in the woods. And we just couldn't get the shot one day, so we had to go back the next day. And so then I had to access that from not Clyde Morley Road, but from another farm to get to, just with the conflict. And then we were able to walk around in the woods and, and get it and then get it back to the stone and, and shoot it. So we have a quote to replace this unit, and, uh, that first line is just the hardware, just this piece right here. And the second line is the software that makes, makes it work.
Twenty-two thousand?
Right.
Correct.
And then the next two items are just, you know, your batteries, your charger. And then on the back page, is a five thousand dollar discount, and we are going to trade an old unit in, not this one, cause this one's only five years old. We're trading one in that we got years ago. The only requirement was it had to power up, so.
It met that.
We, we had to, uh, find some batteries that would work with it and get the batteries to charge and it powers up. Doesn't say how long it's gotta stay powered, but, um, Silers accepting it. And then that last line is like a warranty, and we get that for nothing as well on this pro, on this promo. And this promo ends at the end of the month. And what this does is this new unit, we can go into woods, we can go next to buildings and any kind of obstruction that, it, it just goes right through it.
And, and you can pay for this out of your Corner Perpetuation Fund?
Yes.
Oh, and it's in your budget, you have that amount?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. And, um, the reason that we only had the one quote is, I mean, several reasons. The, I think it meets the, did you bring that paper?
Is it?
Um, it, uh, meets, we're getting a discount that nobody else is giving. It's through Silers who deals with the terminal product. And we have our, um, transit, which we can just call gun or use the prism, and we can shoot long distances and different bearings of distance. And that has a software and.
So it's a compatibility issue?
Absolutely, and software and warranty and things like that with our.
Almost like a single source then.
Yeah, yeah, single source. And, uh, so that's the only reason why that we, we went with these guys. Cause we already have, you know, warranties and firmware updates and everything that, that, that extend out.
And if you went with another provider, it would not be compatible with your software and all the others. It would end up being more costly if you went with another provider.
Right.
Ron, is that sound?
I think compatibility issues is the main issue, I mean, the, I, I don't, I don't have that in front of me. How, what, what's the total amount?
Thirty thousand.
Thirty thousand eighty-five dollars.
Thirty thousand, and you're getting a five thousand dollars.
Just with the five thousand dollars.
So it's thirty-five thousand, you're getting a five. You know, one seven discount, that's, that's also, you know, unique optee.
All right.
I'm moved for approval.
We have a motion and a second to approve the purchase from the Corner Perpetuation Fund, total of thirty thousand eighty-five dollars. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
So you're gonna keep your.
And it should reflect that it's special.
It's all.
Okay.
Oh, each one of us?
Right, Gordon signed one and then.
So you're gonna keep your clear view sunny day device?
Yes.
For those ten percent of the times when it'll, it'll work?
Right.
Yeah, winter, wide open spaces. Otherwise, this will, the new one will work in untorn situations.
Yes, it'll be a great help to us.
We really appreciate your hard work on Clyde Morley.
Hey, thanks.
Now, we need to talk about this National Survey Day.
Where's National Appraiser Day?
It's week, it's a week.
It's a week.
I don't even get a day.
Yeah.
What you have to do is name it National Appraiser Day.
We can start it.
Or a week, or a month, make a month.
Yeah, I love a month.
Next time I talk to the governor, I'll ask him about that.
Just for the record, National Minion Day is June twenty.
Make sure we recognize.
Congratulations, I'll, I'll make a.
June twenty-fourth.
One of our engineering firms sent that notice out. American Structure Point urged commissioners to celebrate National Surveyors Recognition.
In fact, Mary Ann has offered to take you to watch today. Okay.
Signatures, it have to be printed or just signatures?
The signature's fine. I filled out the whole.
I did too.
So printed can't hurt, right? I.
All right, thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good luck tonight.
Mr. Higginbotham. While it gets fresh in your mind after your discussion with, uh, the folks about these homes, you wanna refer back to your, yes, sales, retail list. We're copied on a number of emails back and forth as to some of these questions on, on some of these properties. So I've highlighted the ones that were referenced in the emails, and I, but I failed to highlight the, the one, uh, that's, uh, number thirty on the photograph, so when we get down to that, we'll talk about that too. But anyway, the first one then is the one that indicates on photograph number four, the New Parish Pike, the owner wants to redeem this property. I, I think we should allow, I had a conversation with the son of the owner, and, um, he explained the situation. They just, just became aware of, of the situation. So I, I would suggest that we allow him. In fact, I, I told him that we would decide today. But that if we decided to allow him to redeem it, um, he would need to do that by next Monday. He said he could do that, uh, so I would recommend that we allow that some of it. There's a motion, is there?
What is his situation?
You, I really don't wanna discuss it on television. Um, it's, it convinced me that, uh, uh, that he was unaware. His father has some, uh, issues and, uh.
I was never able to locate a, an entity by that name. I don't know where they were based.
I couldn't find any.
I, I looked in Ohio and I looked in Indiana.
The address was Ohio.
I think they did not show any, I went on the.
Cooper Heights, I think was the address for the Ohio Distinctive Homes.
But the Ohio Secretary of State's database does not show either active or inactive.
I mean, who owns it? I mean, does this man own it or does Distinctive Homes Inc. on LLC on it?
We haven't done title search, I haven't seen, but.
You say the title search is finished on this?
Yes, but I have the record in you, but I don't know how it got there.
I don't know.
I don't think we can make a decision until we take a look at the title search to see who owns it. If we're gonna allow, if we're going to allow this individual to redeem it.
Well, he, he's gonna pay the taxes, that doesn't, if he doesn't own it, he doesn't own it.
Well, how can we let an entity redeem it if we don't know who the owner is? I don't think we can.
It doesn't matter. If the taxes are paid, I, I guess I don't see the, the problem there.
I would just like to know who the owner is.
The owner of record is Distinctive Homes LLC.
And we have the title search in hand, right?
I, I've not seen the title search, but that's part of the process that SRI goes.
SRI does the title search.
Back in February.
Does SRI has that title search or do we? I mean, that answer is forty-five feet away.
It's either Selena or SRI. But again, I agree with the other two that this is just a matter of, I mean, I could go in and pay the pa, taxes myself, and I don't own the property. Wouldn't be in the sale.
Right.
My motion's still standing.
I will second your motion and, uh, ask if there is any further discussion. If not, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, same sign.
Mm-hmm.
Motion carries. All right, I will communicate with, uh, the son, and we'll move on. What's the next one, Steve?
Now, I'll, I'll communicate with Selena to keep that one out of the.
Awesome.
Or, not, don't take title to it. And the next one then is the ones you talked about this morning. It'd be, uh, photograph number eighteen and photographs nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one, and photographs number twenty-three. So I, I don't think you're required to do any action today unless you wanna discuss those further. But you're already gonna take title to those homes.
Which ones, Steve, you talking about?
I mean, I guess if we need a motion to say that we're gonna take title those and hold those for Bridges for Life, I mean, I'll make that motion if we need that.
Well, I don't, I don't think we.
You already, you already indicated last week you're gonna take title to them.
Right.
So we're, we're gonna, we're gonna follow through with the paperwork. Steve, which ones are you talking about?
Number eighteen, the photograph eighteen and the ones that's.
Cross Hall?
Cross Hall, Butler, and Hunt. Cross Hall, Butler, and Hunt.
Fourteen forty-five Hunt Street.
And then the next one to talk about is the number twenty-six. And you can talk about that with number thirty. Those are the ones side by side, those are the two out by the park. Last week you indicated not to take title to those, but since that time, you've received a request from the city that they wanna take, want us to take title, so it takes me along. Correct, and so in one of the email exchanges, I expressed my concern that, uh, if we do that, we ought to have some kind of documentation from the city that says, yes, they want us to take title and transfer that to the city.
Oh, hardly, yeah, we don't wanna get.
We do not yet have any documentation, but I did talk to, to Mayor Olver yesterday. He assured me that they want to take title. Can we?
I've talked to HJ, he, he's gonna get the mayor's approval to, to have the border works executed and agree.
Are those ones that are planning to go through the blight?
Correct, and which brings up the other issue because Steve and I talked to Sarah Mitchell yesterday. Sarah, as you recall, uh, through the EDC, the funding is through EDC and the county. Um, she has, has put into the, uh, the rules, if you will, for the blight elimination program that it could not be, uh, used on a property with, uh, with a designation of, uh, National Register of Historic.
But are both, both of those historic?
Uh, I think just the one on the corner. But, um, you know, we're creating the rules for this program, it's our program. So I would think that we could, we could waive that issue if we choose to. You know, I think the, the, the issue there is that, uh, that they want the property if there's, uh, a clear path to demolition. So I think we, we still need to determine that today to make sure that, uh, that we're moving in the right direction. So.
If we transfer a title to it and everybody will take the title, then the, the only issue is.
How do we accomplish the demolition?
Well, if they can't demolish it, it's, it's gonna be off the tax rolls.
Correct.
Subject to their own unsafe building orders, bro.
Which they already have in place.
They're already in place and the current conditions have already been satisfied, hence the reason for the large lanes against them. There's not a, and of course, these orders can, can be continuing. I mean, they, they're a continued order. But until something else happens to the, to the structure, they'll not take any more action on it. But if they own them, then they can demolish them, so.
So, and I know your question, you want some, you're looking for some affirmation that.
Well, and, and, you know, they can, they can take it down however they.
Sure, I agree, yeah.
It can be removed from the historic places list.
I expect it can. So, yeah, so the issue at hand this morning though is for twenty-six.
To take title.
Right, twenty-six. To twenty-six and for thirty.
If you feel comfortable that the city is going to take them, I'm okay with taking five of them. You'd have the conversations.
This isn't all read, but we still don't want to be stuck with it.
Exactly, no, and that's.
And maybe, you know. In all good, maybe we can do something in writing and just to protect ourselves.
Yeah, I don't want to rush into this. I'd rather be absolutely certain.
There is a rush because today is your.
Yeah, we need to do this.
I apologize.
Oh, that's right.
Now, today's the day that the court needs some feedback from Selena.
And so.
But now, that doesn't mean we have to, just because the court would take action doesn't mean we have to take ownership.
I don't say, I don't know how that works. I must admit, I'm just going to what Selena had related to me. She had gotten a call from Circuit Court yesterday wanting to know which ones that need to be in the order. And I, now whether they're in the order and then you can later not take title, I don't know the answer to that.
Well, I mean.
They can determine not to take title by just by motion. I think, I think the timeline is internally driven, not statutory.
I understand, sure.
So I would think there ought to be a little flexibility here.
The court can wipe it clean without determining to whom to give the title, right?
No. If you, if you don't take title, it goes back and it just stays that way with that lien on it.
And so here's my question because I thought you had said even if the court authorized it, we could later.
That is my understanding. I guess I'll, is that. Is the. Could later what?
Decline to take title to it. There's, if the court orders that this be transferred to the commission, you know, that's part of the order at that particular property. Can we later say, you know, no, we don't want.
I think you say it before you take, the way the statute reads. I think you say, you have the right to say that it's not fit, it's not suitable to go and do a tax sale, to pull it out. Well, now we're one step beyond that, so onto the tax sale. And we determine not to take title to it.
I don't know.
For prior tax sales.
So is it possible if we don't, if we don't tell them to, to transfer a title today? But these two, we'd like to have another week to decide?
I think they just.
Do a separate order? And they could do a separate order.
Worst case scenario, the option can be available after the next tax sale. Now, at that point, you need your certificate of purchase and do like to give it to a read. If there's still the, the ability, it's in the interest of the city, you just sell the certificate, assign a certificate of purchase to read like we did, or to the city like we did on old read.
Better it sit like that for a year than we get stuck with its possession.
So your tax sale would be in October.
Oh, it's that short. Oh, tax sale.
Tax sale.
Tax.
Tax sale's in October.
It won't sell.
No.
Or, or could you even, you know, I assume, as you say, you know, these timeframes are driven by us. Well. Could you do a separate request for an order?
The time set, the timeline for the deed sale is somewhat internally driven, but not, certainly not for the assignment of certificate of purchase. That's very tightly statutory controlled.
And so, and so, well, I, I don't, I don't know all these terms, the certificate.
Okay, I've got a memo that I did for you the last fall on this property. So I will get that out and resend it to you. And, and my position would be that if we aren't comfortable that the city is going to be in a position to immediately take title from us if we get it in this, in the preparation of the deed sale that we, as Mary Ann says, we just let it sit and we can still address it in October.
Have to do that.
Assuming it doesn't bring.
If there's no way that we can get, get some kind of written agreement signed with the city today.
I don't know if I can get it done today. No, I don't even know if they can, yeah.
Or could we get a continuance from the court?
Again, I think we can go ahead and, we don't need to put, have the whole process stand on its ear for these two properties. Let's just go ahead and indicate that we don't want to take title to them at this time, but it has to, the court have filled in or painted, you know, an order issuing strictly on these two properties in the next week.
Yeah, okay. That makes sense to me.
Yeah, let's be safe.
I, I agree. So we ready to, to make a motion to finalize the list or there are others that you might want to?
Just so everybody understands, the number thirty-nine, that was one that was mentioned for Habitat. But that's already going to be in your name.
Right.
So you can decide that.
It'll either go in the sale or it'll go.
Okay.
To another organization.
My understanding, and so New Parish Pike, number five and number four will be taken from it. And you're going to allow this person to redeem by next Monday. The rest of those will stay the same. And then you'll, we'll address those two properties by the park hopefully in a week or so.
And if it's not redeemed.
Three, if, if New Parish Pike isn't redeemed by Monday, by Monday, we'll, we'll want to take title of that one.
Either way, we take title. Oh, well, well, no. If they redeem it by Monday.
Then we won't take that.
But if they don't redeem, I close the business on Monday, then we do take that.
Correct.
Well, we're asking the court to give us for these three properties.
Just three.
Another week to determine.
Okay, okay. That was very clear.
Yeah.
So do you need, we don't need to take any action. We've already, or do you need to?
You've already voted.
Take action on those.
You, you voted on the redemption.
Yeah, we voted on the redemption. The other two were not, they're the same. We didn't ask to take title. So, but, so we need to get with the courts on, on those three.
Right, okay.
All right, anything else on this?
No.
Nothing on, okay. What about your project spreadsheet?
Why Gina's here, I know this, she's not on the agenda, but I think, I think you're on the agenda tonight with both counsel and commissioners on her grant application. And just to have a clarification so that you folks know going into it, Gina, you want to just come up and, let's talk a little bit. I'll run you through this. Talk a little bit about the, the second grant. I don't know if you have it in front of you. There's two grants, applications, and one of them's larger and it's six hundred and some thousand. But this is one that normally funds community corrections. And historically, you know, you always ask for more than what they give you. And so this grant application has substantially more money in it, or some more money in it than Gina believes they're going to get. So my question to her was, if you don't get what you need, do you have an alternative source to fund? Because most of these are positions, they're existing positions. So if they, they don't get their full grant applications, is she going to be asking for, you know, some additional funding from other sources? And those other sources are.
So the, yeah, if we don't get approval for the grant, we would, we would not be able to, to function without help from County General, obviously, because this is a, an ongoing grant that's, that's been established since the eighties, I believe.
Eighty-eight.
Eighty-eight. So yes, we, we wouldn't be able to function without that, the grant, without the help of County General.
Which would be a request then in your, in your general fund budget going forward to counsel?
Yes.
It could also be, you know, project user fees, community correction user fees could also be part of that. But just so there's an understanding that, you know, these are funding for positions that exist.
And, and these are probation officers.
All of the positions, but two are probation officers. And I did not, I, I didn't come up here for, for this particular topic. So I'm not entirely prepared. But we have, I believe, five, let's see, two, two probation officers and myself that are, that are funded. We have another probation officer that's partially funded with, with the grant.
And this grant runs through when?
It's a calendar year grant, so it'd be for the year twenty-five is what I'm, what I'm asking to apply for.
Currently are funded through twenty-four.
Yes.
So if, for whatever reason, this grant is not approved or it's approved at a significantly lower level, it would be the budget process that, that you go through with counsel.
Yes.
To try to find alternatives to fund these positions. Okay.
Yes.
Fair enough.
Okay.
Wouldn't you expect to know?
We usually don't find out until July, sometimes later. It's, it's late when we find out.
Late.
But we'll do our best. Thank you.
The one thing Gina does need, and she and I haven't totally gotten together on it, is therefore it's a composite of a lot of positions, some directed by the position itself, others by appointment, by the commissioners. We'd like to kind of do a housekeeping and get it all, get everybody reappointed and know who, how they're serving, what, what, what position they're in by virtue of their, their position versus whether it's a discretionary appointment. And I did not get that list prepared, but I'll have it by tonight, I would expect.
Okay.
It's been a while since we cleaned that up.
I have a list if that helps.
You do?
I do.
And the board has approved the grant submission?
So the board has not, this is going to be a separate issue so that the, what, what Ron is referring to is our bylaws state that the advisory board members, if they are not statutory. So we, we have two components. We have statutory members and we also have members who are appointed to the advisory board. And the bylaws state that the appointed members need to be appointed every four years. And that has not been done that I can, that I can find. So I am just asking for a certain list of board members be appointed by, by you. If you, if you would be so gracious as to do that, then we can carry on at our board meeting that's happening at noon. No pressure.
I make it effective retroactive to January one of twenty twenty-four so we get, so we get on a controlled cycle that.
And you have that list with you?
I do. I would ask, I would ask the board to approve Ashley Green, Carl Reinhardt. Do you want me to go on the list and just continue the list of names or one by one?
Can you tell us what agency they're with?
Yes. Ashley Green is from the prosecutor's office. Carl Reinhardt is, is on the board as a community member. Emily Williamson is with Meridian. So those three would need appointed also. Sam Battistone from the Public Defender's Office, Mr. Brad Dwinger, Cory George from probation, Kyle Weatherly from Richmond Police Department, Whitney Mays from Hope House, Kathy Williams, Rob Bachmeier from Centerstone, Samantha Lewis from probation, and Brent Baker from Richmond Community Schools.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve those board members for another four-year term?
For a four-year term?
Four-year term.
Retroactive to January one.
January one.
For retroactive to Jan. one, those appointed board members.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. You have appointed board members.
And with the simplest thing, because I don't think they need to take action on the appoint the board members who are serving, but based upon their elected or appointed positions, to have your minutes renewed, damn, effectively, at the same time, based upon their continued occupancy of their positions.
On the statutory members?
Yeah.
Those particular members are, are, those, those positions are held as long as they are in their position.
Right, so would it make sense then to have the minutes reflected, they continue to hold those positions?
Yes.
So that you, in effect, out of minutes, it'll show your board the undue reconstitute.
Yes.
Okay. And then this evening, we'll take the action that we need to take on, on the grant applications. Correct?
Out of curiosity, who are the statutory members of the advisory board?
Judge Drake, Judge Cox, Judge Horn, Angela Jordan from Department of Child Services, Sheriff Rutter, and Becky Studebaker as the victim advocate.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Some elected, some appointed.
All right. Steve, anything else?
Oh, yes. Mary Walker from Tourism has asked permission to put a sign, an eight-foot by eight-foot sign in the southwest corner of the Courthouse Plaza for advertising clips.
Would it say that for people to go ahead and leave as soon as they?
I don't know whether that matters or not.
Which is the council or the PR?
This would be a fabric-type sign.
I have no problem with that.
Are we, do we need a motion for that? So.
Second. They have a motion in a second to approve Tourism putting up a sign about the eclipse. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Last week you'd indicated that, remember the group that was asking for consideration of the square-bodied truck show at the fairgrounds? You'd indicated that you wanted her to be here next week.
Correct.
She cannot be here next week. And so she is, she's either offered to send her daughter next week or she can't be here till April third.
Just a week.
To me, either way is fine.
Where's the square body? Is that Liberty Weekend?
Yeah.
Plenty of time, April third.
I think you'd be well-served to have the person herself rather than seven dollars. So April third.
April third, okay.
Her daughter married Mr. Wampers' son, by the way.
And if you want to refer to your project sheet, obviously, some of these you've seen last week, but I keep it for counsel to see because they've not seen all these. So just a brief rundown on this. The courthouse exterior, they're still continuing, continuing to do the window installation. There's obviously been a couple of days this past week due to weather that they've not been able to work. But that work continues. And you also know, just, this would be the first payment that we've made to one of these projects out of ARPA. And so there was a payment made to them from the ARPA fund to the courthouse exterior contractor. The annex generator, I have sent an email to the contractor. I don't want to say it's a demand letter, but certainly it's a firm letter. Wanted a timeframe at this time forward. We have surpassed, according to the contract terms, we have surpassed the date of substantial completion, which was March third or March fifth. I also have not seen any submittals. And those are things that the contractor submits to, in this case, DLZ, who's our architectural firm, engineering firm, for their review to ensure that their, the equipment that they're going to use meets the specifications of the contract. So I've since got those, so I did request those. And those came actually late yesterday afternoon. DLZ has affirmed that they have had those and that they have approved those. So the only issue still outstanding as to whether or not they have a valid, the contractor has a, in my opinion, has a valid reason for delay of installation is the delivery of the generator. So early on, the contractor indicated that the delivery of the generator would be between twenty-four and forty-eight weeks. Well, twenty-four weeks stops in past, forty-eight weeks puts it into June. So if, if that is in fact an accurate statement, then the delay is, I think, is within the parameters of the contract. Although I've asked for this delivery date several times from the contractor and have not gotten response. And so I've reached out to DLZ to see if they are comfortable to contract, to contact the vendor themselves to see if in fact they could get a, now, they may not be comfortable with that, you know, going around behind that, but.
Find out whether it's been ordered.
Or, or when it was ordered as to when that timeframe started.
Okay.
So that's where we are with that.
Steve, could you be sure that in our haste to have it delivered, that they not do that April fifth or eighth? Because the, the last time the generator went down, nine-one-one was down for thirty-five minutes, and we would not want to be down during the eclipse. The, um, the generator went...
Well, they were down, they just moved to their mobile command.
Well, but it took thirty-five minutes and they were dark for thirty-five minutes. Well, once you say it, the goal was twenty minutes to...
They're, they're nev- they were never dark.
They weren't now.
It was clarified that.
There was somebody in the nine-one-one center until they were set up and ready to go operational.
And, and so we never...
Oh, they were just not operational, okay. Calls were not transferred elsewhere.
Correct.
I misunderstood what she said. That was a pretty alarming...
Let's talk about that, just because that's, that's a new project that's added to line thirteen. So a couple of weeks ago, um, you know, we test the generator every week. We test it without a load. We test it without a load every week. We test it with a load once a month. So this was a test, uh, with the load test. So when we activated the test button, the generator started as it should, but the load did not transfer. So obviously that's a concern. So we called the, the company who manufactures the transfer switch. We had a local contractor come in, and to make a long story short, we couldn't do an accurate testing of the piece of equipment with, with commercial power active, you know, going to the building. So we had to move nine-one-one into their mobile command center, which, so they, they were never without communication.
Okay.
Uh, we didn't make the switch until they were in the mobile command center, and then they were still up and broadcasting. So they were never dark.
Okay.
They were never dark. So, uh, when we did do the test of the equipment, the generator was functioning as it should. The generator was putting out the appropriate voltings, appropriate amps, appropriate cycles. It was in the test panel itself. It wasn't in the transfer switch. Because we act- when we actually killed the power to the building via the disconnect, the generator came on and functioned as it should, and we did that a couple of times and it did it each time. So we were relatively comfortable that the transfer switch itself was activating. It was the test panel that wasn't working. So, uh, we've got a test panel, the test panel, the piece of equipment's on order. It's going to be about a seventy-two-hundred-dollar job, the piece of equipment's out four weeks. Uh, it's going to take about two hours to put that in, so when we put that in, they'll be back into their mobile command center during that time. We're also making a raise for a portable generator to run our sump pumps, because remember those sump pumps that are in this building can't be down for more than a couple of minutes at a time. So we'll have an auxiliary power on those sump pumps while they're doing the repairs. Now, all that wouldn't be necessary had the new generator been in place, because we can, we'd be able to have those switched back and forth, and we would never, we would have a redundancy then built into the system. That's the whole purpose of this. So to your comment, they were never in the dark.
Okay.
And, uh, hopefully they won't be in the dark as we progress through this.
And this won't be accomplished on April the eighth?
Correct.
Good.
Matthew's already made that comment.
Okay.
He's already, because when I had briefed him on this, that's, in fact, there were about three dates he didn't want us to do it on.
Okay.
April eighth was one of them, and I asked him why. So going on down then, um, the material for the, the audit is still one or three weeks, one to three weeks away. Also, this voter registration camera, this, we've added this. This is an actual camera that's going to be added to our security system that needs to be in place for the protocol of counting ballots, counting the paper ballots. There has to be a camera on the counting system at all times as you're doing this. So we've had to install another camera, and that's the, the cost of the camera. And then, uh, the Coleman Center roof, LWC, is going to be out there on the twenty-second, which is Friday, uh, and they will, they need to get lift up into the roof, up of the, of the ceiling to see what kind of, uh, if in fact we've had any water damage up that, so that they can look at the conditions that to see if this system that we're proposing would be appropriate for this application. And then, uh, the HVAC system at the First Bank Extra Hall, it is two to three weeks to have the completion, but I do have a change order that is going to be required. This change order, if you remember back when we first started this project, remember the location of the pads? When they, when they drew up the plans, they located the pad to be symmetrical with the signage and the doors. Well, that ended up being on top of gas lines. So remember, we had to move the pads further away. So this is going to cause additional length of ductwork to be made. And so each, each end, each pad, uh, the ductwork is going to add about thirty feet to each one of them with some, uh, uh, forty-fives. And so the change order is for ninety, ninety-two ninety, ninety-nine thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars. And that is for the extra ductwork and, and insulation. And, uh, that falls within our content, our, we have a five percent contingency built into it, which is about a twenty-four thousand dollar contingency, so it would be paid from that contingency.
Good.
And that ductwork is white, right?
Pardon me?
It did come in as white ductwork?
It's, it's white, uh, insulation.
Oh.
Yeah, never, they're insulated.
They're insulated and it is white. The additional is...
I'm not sure it's white, but I think it's...
I think we agreed not...
You know what? I don't remember looking up.
Yeah, because it was going to be like an ugly gray silvery, we spent a little extra money to make it white.
You might be right.
Just want to make sure the additional is the same color as the, and I, I remember thinking we really don't want this ugly. And the silver aluminum kind of color was going to be very industrial.
I, I, I think I saw that, but...
Just want to make sure it isn't two different colors.
Oh, sure, yeah. So I'm looking for a, an approval for change order.
So moved.
Second. Oh, aye, second. Okay, go around.
You're a seconding machine, man.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose same sign. Motion carries. And I mentioned, we, we had a parking problem this past weekend. We had two, two large events. We had the, we had the kaleidoscope event in Coleman, and then, what was the other one? Something for Life, uh, two large events. And, uh, it, it, you can, you could see the need for the additional parking space. We've been discussing, uh...
Yes.
Because we had cars all over the place.
Any damage to the grounds?
There was some, which, which we've had before, you know.
Yeah.
But it, it demonstrated when we had both of those facilities rented out at the same time that we don't have enough parking. And then, um, the rest of it, just a note down at the bottom, again, a, a one-figure, the council one-time figure as of today actually shows twenty-four or two-point-four million dollars, but that includes that encumbered amount. I just keep that there so that everybody's aware that, uh, there's, you know, one-point-one million dollars out there someplace that something needs to occur. But the actual, the actual working balance in the council one-time account is one-point-two, uh, million dollars.
I see. There are no numbers associated with annex landscaping and hard surfacing?
You will see, that'll become populated hopefully in the next week or so.
Oh.
In fact, I'm, I will add, remember, you've got a couple of other projects that you're looking at for consideration. Remember the parking lot that we just talked about? Those will be added to this list so that you can keep track of those, so that we, that they're in front of us each week and, and can, uh, note the progress or lack of progress on those. But, you know, those will be added to the, to the list. All right?
Have, as you're working with the, uh, potential contractors, has there been any potential of salvaging the brick from the annex landscaping for decorative purposes or anything at the fairgrounds or anywhere?
You haven't talked about that.
That's just going to go to the landfill. It seems a shame to have that brickwork, uh, just become landfill.
Well, the architect that, uh, we discussed this with, our, my concern is, it's all broken. Yeah, there's a lot of broken. You say all, but it's, not all, but it's...
Maybe highway riprap, I don't know. You know, it just seems, I, I would hate to have that go to the landfill if it could serve any recycled use at all for, um, riprap, I mean...
Do you have any holes on your farm that you need filled?
Yeah, it, it, it could be, you, you know, it just...
We'll, we'll see what we can do.
It would be a lot of trips to the landfill.
We'll keep that in mind. So... And so the last item is, uh, this is addressing foyer at the front of the courthouse. Now, did you happen to give a picture? I do. This is between the two doors. And the, obviously that's our, you know...
So it's in the airlock?
It's in the airlock. It's in the little foyer area. And, you know, certainly over the years, this is where we bring in everything. You know, people, not only do people go through this, but, you know, our lifts go through this door and any equipment, papers, stacks of papers, so the marble has become cracked over the years, and there's a rug that's over it, but in the last several months, some of those pieces that have cracked are not coming loose, and so they're, they're, they're no longer attached.
And so most of these lines are not veining in marble, it's cracks in marble.
Right, okay. And you notice there's two different colors of marble there. You don't find that in the rest of the courthouse, but there's two, two different colors here. So to replace that, here, here's a piece of our courthouse marble, and we do have a few pieces of this around. This is a piece of courthouse marble that had been used somewhere and had a floor on it, and that's what this is, that's what this stuff is. And we've saved these, but, you know, whether these could be cleaned or not. So there's a, the estimate to, uh, to use our existing marble and, and use these if we can is nine thousand, two hundred and sixty-three dollars. I would rather not use these because this is all I have, and if I have broken ones elsewhere in the courthouse, then...
Then, oh.
I would prefer to replace it with our actual marble.
Right.
So they, they make a porcelain and, uh... But you can see that they can get fairly close to our swirling. You know, there's this, there's this one, um...
Could you like...
There's, there's this one. Obviously, it's not quite as gray, but it will be separated. There's, there's one over here.
Yeah.
You know, they're not, obviously not exact, but they will be separated by those, by the doors.
Right.
Porcelain is a little more durable than marble. Marble is porous. This is not a porous thing. Obviously, it's, it's a little cheaper than marble. They would cut this, these are an inch thick, and they are suggesting that we use three-quarter inch thick so that they can put a better base below it, and, uh...
So it'd have a, a mortar bed that it's sliding into?
Yeah. And that quote is eleven thousand, four hundred and twenty-three dollars.
That's going to replace all of it.
Not just the broken? Correct, the entire thing. Now, the question I have...
Inside the red.
It, it would re- it would include replacing the red as well.
Okay.
Because that's part of the floor. It's just, it's broken too.
Yeah, looks wrong.
And you can, there's a better picture of the red right there.
Okay.
So, um, I guess I'm looking for, just, just understand that it's not going to be an exact match. Um, we'll get it as close as we can. I, I would recommend we do this and not use these, just so I have them for...
Makes sense.
Other places.
There's an individual broken tile in the courthouse.
Correct. And we've done that before.
So that's original equipment?
For application.
Those, those pieces on the left are...
Really old.
So how will it, will it wax out, attempt to blend a little over time?
Because your last floor is in carpet, doesn't it?
I would suggest we do that. Now, I, which, which sample do you, you go with? I, you know, if you folks...
I trust you to pick the right ones. I don't need to pick this out. I'm...
We use our best judgment.
Yes.
Use your best judgment.
Okay. Might even, uh, you know, go with the recommendation of the tile supplier.
I probably wouldn't.
That's probably what I will do. Uh, and we'll pay for this out of Q, uh, Q court. Okay. You need a motion to just approve this project?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign. Motion carries.
That's all I have.
That's all you have. Okay. Uh, the Veteran Services Interlocal, um, is a, a, an agreement that is, it's a one-year agreement that automatically renews. We, uh, we have not re-approved anything since twenty-twenty-two, I believe. And we don't have to if it...
I think it has an automatic renewal unless...
Unless we notify them or they notify us. So I bring that up because, you know, we need to, to send them an invoice for the, uh, for the, uh, their payment to us to continue the second veteran...
They contribute?
Service officer.
I, I, it's been a while since I've heard that they, they contribute half of the incremental cost of the second, or is it...
I think it's actually part of the city to contribute thirty thousand dollars to partially defer the cost.
Thirty thousand?
So I, I...
Roughly, yeah.
Yeah, essentially.
Because it's hard to predict exactly how many hours.
How many hours, and therefore what the, what the exact cost would be. But this is an annual agreement, so I did talk...
It's already renewed. I mean, I think the notice period is what, fall?
Yeah, I, I did talk to Merrill, where he, he understands the position and, and is, wants to continue it, so, we just need to, to make sure we want to continue it and then follow through with, um, an invoice for the amount, thirty thousand dollars. So, uh, just kind of a, a notice. I don't think we need to take action to make sure you're aware of...
Is it sufficient with the last hourly rate increase? Should we consider a slight increase?
I think we could consider that for next year, but not, not...
Right, yeah. I mean, are we... We probably ought to look at that before our budgets turned in to see if we need to play catch-up for twenty-four.
And we need to make sure the council is informed if we're right.
I, I'm guessing we're probably, we should have maybe looked at that for this year.
Yeah, I think we're good, but...
Are we okay? All right.
But we'll, we'll follow up this year again.
Before you move on to veteran services, I think we really need to take a position on the proposal of last week to establish a kind of a social services emergency fund for veterans. I think that's outside the scope of the VSO office.
I think it's way outside the scope, and I, I'm not even sure it's legal. And which is why they have a donation, uh...
Right.
Pot of money available, uh, because this would be, uh, tax dollars that would go to specifically benefit individuals, and I don't think we're allowed to do that, so...
And I don't think we need to take action on that. I just think we need be able to, should we be asked again, do we have a consensus that that is outside the scope of the VSO office? And if, I, I think consensus is enough, but, um, they are certainly excellent at making the proper referrals to agencies that can help veterans. And, you know, we have asked the auditor to get the IRS statement should other donors wish to make contributions just as others have to the highway department. just as others have to the Highway Department and, you know, if someone other another organization wishes to make a donation and the auditor wants to be helpful, the auditor could go forth and get that letter from the IRS.
The other part of that question was that the auditor recommended that there be a separate budget for Veteran Services as opposed to being a part of the commissioner's budget. I see absolutely no reason to do that. We have a line item for everything that that they would need. We we don't have a separate budget for Human Resources, which operates the same way, so.
We we make interlocal agreements with the City of Richmond and, you know, other departments, no. I agree, I think we can have consensus on that as well.
Okay, um the East Germantown and Economy interlocal agreements, Beth, do you have?
Yes, I do.
So we have approved the one for Milton.
Yes.
We approved the the memorandum of understanding for the YMCA.
Yes.
Last week.
In fact, that check was cut today.
These two, uh what have you got for us?
So like last week, um you approved the Milton interlocal, which covered the help projects. This week I have two more, I have Economy as well as East Germantown. East Germantown's is complete, Ron, I think you all got an email of it, I do have a couple of copies if you need to look at it and review it. East Germantown has three projects that came through the community input for the town, um creating their park projects. The county is going, has agreed to grant them ten thousand dollars. Their sidewalk project, the county is granting ten, and their sewer upgrades, twenty-one thousand. The interlocal has a Schedule A for each project that I mentioned. East Germantown has signed commitments with contractors for the sidewalks and sewer upgrades. That is attached as well as the estimate and the page of the strategic investment plan. So East Germantown is good to go.
And the the uh the interlocal agreement stipulates that that each town needs to follow their their own and state guidelines for for purchasing.
Purchasing in public works.
Right.
To these in-app.
Yeah.
Probably be under that.
So it's up to them to to follow those. We're we're committing to the money that's committed in help and that will be that will be sent to the the town. So each of these.
Correct.
Folks know that and they've signed off on the agreement.
I'm curious, are these towns subject to Davis Bacon with their contractors?
Towns are, just because they're towns, no.
Okay.
So, yes. Okay, Ron wrote the interlocal agreement, basically protects us to have, we are not taking on that responsibility. The only thing I'm being certain of is because we're using our federal ARFA dollars, that the payment that we're making, our vendor, so speak, the town of East Germantown, is in good standing and can receive federal dollars from Wayne County. That's done. So I have two copies of East Germantown's, and I expect it will go to council tonight for their approval.
All right, so uh this.
We have an approval.
We have not.
No, you have not.
Of East Germantown and Economy.
We have a motion and a second to approve the interlocal agreements for East Germantown and Economy, any further discussion?
Oh, you're doing Economy too, thank you.
Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
It's their park, right? No, yeah, park and the two?
Correct.
Yes.
Motion carries.
I retained a little bit from reading about it.
Just one place?
No, yeah, just one place, there's two copies.
Just one, two copies, one signature.
Do you want to talk more about your film?
Bubbling to the top of if anything.
Interlocal strictly, um it would be Milton.
Davis Bacon kick in.
Or, well, we already did.
Oh, does it, oh, good. That would kill ARFA, wouldn't it?
Dublin would be next and then Cambridge City. And and I will prepare those, the next MOU, um I can talk to you about it, there's one coming up. I'll prepare it and get the copy or get your template.
Thank our great grandchildren for all of this.
Okay, um anything else, Beth?
No, unless you have questions for me, I don't leave without those in my hands, so I'll have them ready for workshop.
Almost done, now they're done.
Thank you very much.
Everything going all right with all the reports and?
East Germantown is having an open house to celebrate them reaching their goal. It's Saturday afternoon from one to three at the East Germantown Town Hall, if anybody's interested. Let's see, the new Paris Pike property we already dealt with and the RHS use of the county parking lot.
I received an email yesterday from Richmond High School wanting to know if they could use the WellCare lot on April the twenty-seventh from seven to midnight. Prom, for prom, yes.
So move approval.
We have a motion and a second to approve the issued by Richmond High School of the county parking lot on April twenty-seventh from seven to midnight for the prom, uh any further discussion?
Yes, in the prior years, I have made a courtesy call to Eric Coulter to make sure this doesn't interfere with any activities.
Is it Saturday from seven to midnight?
It's just a courtesy call, he has appreciated that courtesy call.
Then I would designate you to make a courtesy call to.
Just for the prom?
Yes.
I uh I made that motion.
Yes, we have a motion and a second, no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign, motion carries.
Who knows, maybe they're having a health fair, a midnight health fair.
I think that would be very nice of you to call them and tell them.
Because if I'm doing that, the letter of um vacation has been delivered regarding our intent.
Months ago.
Has there been any response?
The conversation with WellCare moving out of the building at the end of this.
There's been response.
I, should I be aware of?
I mean, uh there's been discussion, uh they're.
Negotiating?
I I I think they understand our position and I just think they're having a hard time finding, there's just a lot of, there are a lot of balloons in the air that they, no one has any control over.
Understand they may have purchased some land and maybe looking at construction.
Certainly there could be opportunities, I think, with the monies, with property now available from the Whartonley site, that that should be vetted, I think. And they, I think they know that, uh I think a big uncertainty is the outcome of the national election and what it and what effect that could have on uh R S's A existence or B budget for their existence and and correlating that to uh you know, qualified health centers. They, there's just a lot of questions, but no, I mean, they, I think they retain counsel to review my conclusion or our conclusion that that last option is just more like a an agreement to agree and it doesn't really spell anything out. So and under the terms of the contract law, it's probably not enforceable or binding on either by anybody, but you know, if our needs, I don't know what the pace of our needs will be, and I think they've thrown out, they may need a
Well, Dr. Jefor has two new individuals for the um social, the the soft handoff, if you will, for um mental health and addiction individuals in need of services.
Well, I think we're building on core services, I think it's going to be pretty quick, more more quickly paced than I might expect at the outset.
On that, where do you envision those two individuals plus the fire department?
Located with the fire department.
Well, but they claim they are now two people in an eight-by-ten room.
They're going to move them out of the fire station, but remember that we are not, we are not setting up a program. We are funding their program, and so they'll determine where they go.
Okay, so we don't need to be looking downstairs and the courage, scroll, annex.
All right.
One more thing.
Yes, sir.
I I think we kind of left it hanging, I don't think we got the closure last year or last week. The uh new fee schedule for Septics uh that that they run over, uh that does not need to be advertised. And I think, and in fact, if you think, if you recall, all that they changed were the they, rather than have the installment payments, they consolidated them to where they had it before as a front-end payment. And then they eliminated the contractor bonding requirement because the state has said they, you know, that. So I don't, a motion to approve that, submit a fee schedule would be.
So move that we submit the fee schedule, change in timing of the fee payments.
We have a motion and a second to approve the new fee schedule as as proposed by the Health Department, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Sorry, I don't, did he leave a hard copy of that with you?
I think I have one on my computer.
Just might let him know that they approved it.
All right, Bobby, anything else?
No, I don't.
Before, I think you were in the room, you did decide to err on the side of caution and eliminate the detail of, you did talk to her about it, okay.
And I've got it right here.
And if you have any.
Let's defer those, approval of those minutes until next week if we get those in the final order that we want.
To touch base with Bobby on any changes that you feel need to be made, Matt. Now, one thing we had to close the loop on, you outlined how you would see dealing with Bridges for Life and the opioid settlement in kind of a two-stage, since they have a six-month curriculum, maybe that would fit into what you're thinking of?
No, I think, I think.
What is the name of the entity that's the umbrella for the?
Bridges for Life.
Is that corporate entity?
Yes.
Oh, okay, yes.
It's the the program is called
Building Together.
Building Together, okay.
As a program under.
The Bridges for Life is an organization.
That's near five oh one C three.
Bridges for Life has been in total compliance with our requirements as a recipient of twenty twenty-two opioid settlement funding. They have been very timely and responsive from being one of the original grant recipients last year. They received thirty-five thousand last year.
Okay, Brad's got another meeting.
Pack what, oh, you have a meeting, oh, you have a meeting, yes.
So let's, let's uh let's recess, we'll come back into session at one thirty, we'll we'll finish our business, probably won't take very long.
Oh, we do have a one thirty?
Correct.
Okay, I didn't know that.
All right, we'll recess until one thirty. All right, we are back in session, welcome back. Let's go ahead and take care of claims.
Okay, we have several claims for approval today. First of all, I move for approval of the following claims. Payroll dated March twenty-second, federal tax and per payments dated March twenty-second, Dunn flex payments and garnishments dated March twenty-second, regular claims dated today, March twentieth, regular claims from last week dated March fifteenth, CenterPoint and Indiana American Water claims that were paid last week on March fourteenth, and jury duty claims dated yesterday, March nineteenth, move for approval of all of these.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the claims, defer the discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. All right, and we will defer the minutes from last week to next week, get those all ready to go and approve those next week. Okay, uh Brad, you had something?
Um I'm gonna pass it down, so I have got.
This whole packet.
Yeah, wish list, we we discussed last week about the Sheriff's Department, their request for the opioid money. I've asked all all the, I've reached out to all the police departments within Wayne County other than the City of Richmond and had a wish list from them of items that um they would like to see us give them some money to spend, so. But the main thing I want to discuss about is the Sheriff's Department. There's more urgency on theirs or because of the April eighth event.
So he wants to get, try and get this stuff before the eclipse.
Right.
Oh, he wants this now.
So, and that being the drones.
Drone and the one U T V for up to thirty thousand.
And the furniture, he's he's withdrawing that?
Yeah, yeah, I.
We're just crossing it off, whichever way you prefer.
So he wants the ATV and the drones now, both?
So that would be up to eighty-five thousand dollars. And then this other thing on the on the license plate reader subscriptions and service, what, so is this software?
It's a software because they have the, they have two or three vehicles now that are equipped with license plate readers.
Okay, so he's not asking for equipment, he's asking for a a like licensing.
Licensing for that equipment.
So that would be a a once-a-year kind of charge?
I believe so, yeah, it's a.
So, but we don't need to do that now.
Yeah, the, I don't think we need to make actions on any of these other items except for the um U T V and the drones.
So was that in the form of a motion of up to eighty-five thousand for drones and side, one side-by-side ATV?
I'll make that motion.
And again, subject to him following the appropriate.
Which I do believe that I sent an email to him that he was going to send it to Ron to get make sure that everything's above board and that it's a single source and all this stuff.
Okay, and again, Ron confirmed that uh that this does not need any further appropriation by council.
Right. He's right here, we can come.
Just ask the source.
That's how I read his email, so.
Mr. Cross, so we're talking about expenditure of funds for the sheriff uh from the opioid settlement money. And I believe in an email to to Mr. Dwinger, you said that you didn't believe that the opioid settlement funds needed to be appropriated by council.
I do believe they do.
You said you did not.
I do not believe they do.
Okay.
Not tax money.
No, in fact, you have the right, it's somewhat surprising reading some of the data that's come through the Google that uh you could sell, you could assign or sell for value your entitlement to the distributions. And council doesn't even have to approve the the amount that you might choose if you so chose to do that. Probably a little late now, you probably would see twenty-two and you'll be getting twenty-three, twenty-four, but.
We did have it appropriated last year.
We we did ask them to appropriate it and they did, but we don't have to, is what you're saying. And so I would, I would still like to keep them in the loop, keep them
No problem at all.
To speed, but in in this case, when there is some urgency to allow the sheriff to move forward, I would suggest that. I would suggest that we go ahead and, and authorize him to, to go through the purchasing process for the drones and, and one side-by-side ATV.
What's the nature of the end of the purchase?
Drones and, and ATV.
And these would be, did your motion read unrestricted?
It didn't, but it, I mean, it's unrestricted.
I think it should.
Would be unrestricted.
It would be unrestricted. I'll, I'll amend that to the unrestricted bonds.
That way, there's no question. And this month, we did receive from twenty-twenty-three opioid fund, a hundred and two thousand, a hundred and forty-two dollars and eleven cents deposit to unrestricted fund twelve thirty-eight.
So with, with what assurance? I mean, that came to us from the Attorney General's office with the stipulation that it was unrestricted.
Totally unrestricted. You want to build a bridge?
What was that number again?
A hundred and two thousand, one hundred forty-two and eleven cents.
Have we verified that the money's come to us with the designation that's appropriate, whether it be part of the seventy percent?
Right. Seventy percent had to ascribe to Exhibit E standards. And the amount that went into, uh, the restricted fund number twelve thirty-seven was two hundred forty-three thousand, five fifteen.
And do we know how much of that, if any, is money from the small towns that we're gonna have to pay out to them?
That's separate. This is all county money.
That is county money.
Right.
They will send the restricted and unrestricted for each county separately then?
For each little town?
Right.
Yeah, the, the amount was, uh, specified in a separate distribution for Milton and the big towns got over five thousand.
Right.
The little towns were under five thousand, and it was specified and distributed.
And that clarifies my second point, once we vote on this, is that we don't want to make action on this other wish list until we get, see what they're getting and-
Absolutely.
They're gonna spend their money first, too.
And, and in addition to the twenty-twenty-three distribution, we also received a tiny bit of our twenty-twenty-four distribution this month. We also received unrestricted six thousand, six hundred seventy-nine dollars and fifteen cents, unrestricted from twenty-twenty-four, and restricted twenty-twenty-four distribution, we received fifteen thousand, nine hundred twenty-three dollars and sixty-eight cents. So you can see we have roughly two hundred and sixty-five thousand restricted and a hundred and-
Should be a hundred and eight, two, eight, twenty-one, twenty-six.
And we have, you know, but we are in the red unrestricted, so, so there has to be a transfer from the unre, from the unrestricted balance to restricted because that payment to Crossroads ran that one account way deep into the red, because it was totally expended.
Okay, I suggest we need to sort of do that with the auditors.
But our new deposits in March of twenty-twenty-four were in unrestricted, a hundred and two thousand, one forty-two and six thousand, six hundred seventy-nine. So we know for sure before the, that the fund balancing takes place, that there's almost a hundred and nine thousand in unrestricted. It's brand-new just, uh, deposits.
So there's a motion on the floor to spend, allow the sheriff to spend up to eighty-five thousand of unrestricted opioid funds for the purchase of drones and a side-by-side ATV. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right.
Are any of the other, uh, law enforcement requests urgent, Brad?
I don't, I don't believe so, and I think, like I said before, I think I'd like to see what money each town is getting for their opioid and put it on the, it's like, okay, if you want us to give you some of this money, spend it first on your wish list.
Right.
And then we'll help you out if, you know, like, Tiggers Town has a canine, a part of a canine.
Let's, let's get Bobby to put all that together on a spreadsheet, along with how much money is going to the individual towns. And we'll, we'll take this up out of the way of your meeting.
And it, and it's, it's all online. If you want to see how every little town spent their money last year, assuming they met the deadline, um, I've got the URL that you can go and see how every town spent their, and some of it was like eight, ten thousand dollars, so, I mean, they're getting money every year, too, till twenty thirty-eight, so. And also the, um, full distribution's going out for twenty-eight years is also on the Attorney General's website. And, um, but I'll give that to Bonnie, so Bobby, so you can, um, put it on one piece of paper so we can see it, and if you could email it to us, too, that would be nice.
Good.
Um, but, um, that, and we did receive a small payment late last year from twenty-twenty-three. We got just a little bit last year, so that's why I went to the treasurer's office to try to, what's in each one of these accounts? So we've got to get to one account.
I'd like to see exactly what we have and what-
Right, and Gateway is just not giving it to us a straightforward black and white spreadsheet. That's what I wanted to see.
We could work on that and make it a little less clear than that one. Stupid it up for me, because I'm not very smart.
And we'll get quite a lot more late this year, but not till probably December, January. So, yeah, we, let's not count on that.
Anything else we need to complete today? Bobby, you have anything else?
Well, I'd like to discuss our morning meeting with, um, Bridges for Life.
Let's discuss.
I think clearly the more we're able to grant this cycle to Bridges for Life, the more successful they can be and the quicker they can become self-sustaining. If we give them too little right now, the, um, chances of being successful and being able to attract private sector partners, uh, and being able to have sufficient number of trainees slash construction workers.
Their plan is, from what I gather, is never to have more than six at a time.
Oh, I think it depends on the number of properties.
No, it depends on how many people one person can train at once.
Yeah, I get the impression it's four, six, it's a class, per se.
And that's six months, and then they start a new class, so. At any rate, I, I personally want to see them demonstrate that this can be successful before, uh, before we get too deeply into this, and I think by having a, a trial with two houses and-
Hopefully it's what we're in, which is four residents.
Right, and, and I think I'd prefer to wait till, to decide how much money we should, uh, work with them on until they have a chance to get into those properties and really take a look at it.
Yeah, because I'd hate to say, okay, we're gonna give them a hundred and fifty thousand, and it's gonna be two hundred and fifty to do four houses. Or vice versa, it's only gonna be a hundred thousand we get, I mean-
Right, and if we can move with dispatch on getting, you know-
In the next thirty days, I think we'll know, we'll know exactly which houses are available. We'll know, uh, what they think it's gonna take to, uh, complete them. And we'll know what other people are asking for in terms of the, the other Sheriff's Departments or the other police departments. We'll be able to, to make a decision there, and then we'll know if there's any money left over. But right now, I'm not real confident that we know exactly how much restricted and how much unrestricted money there is. I'm certainly not confident.
I, I know at a minimum what went into the bank in March, just exactly what has to be transferred back and forth here.
But we can't do anything with bridges until after April twenty-fourth. I mean, they, they can't start working until after April twenty-fourth, correct? That's when we take titles of properties and-
Oh, no, we can take title as soon as the judge-
March twenty-fourth.
On March twenty-fourth.
Yeah.
Right, which is-
March twenty-fourth, so.
The sooner they can get in, the better, because they're, they're, they're now getting into prime construction.
I have no problem at all getting them access to those properties, give us that dollar amount, and expedite how much we're gonna give them at that point. I don't know.
And even then, we can say, okay, we're just starting off with a hundred thousand. We know it's gonna be at least that much.
Because they gotta get tools.
Figure out, figure out the rest of it as we go.
I, I think it's a consensus that we're all on board with this, right?
The three properties, they might find one of them is a demo.
Two properties, what they-
Oh, you, well, no, they would like, they said they could handle all four, but now that, um, their priority one is gone.
Correct. Well, it appears that it would be-
I want to give them access to all three.
Absolutely.
Once we take title, we could let them look at all three, because the odds of
Sure.
one of those three being too far gone, if it's going to cost eighty thousand dollars-
Absolutely.
Then let them take a look at all three, and then we can do, put pen to paper.
Correct.
No problem at all.
Correct.
That, I think we're all in agreement that far.
Okay, anything else? Ron, anything else?
Oh, yeah, while we're on that, um, I'm not sure we really need to engage, um, drug-free Wayne County partnership with what's gonna be left, because I think we can handle the unrestricted, don't you think?
I wanna see how much money is left.
It's just, uh, we wanted to get that ball rolling in case there is, you know, we, we still got more money coming in the future, so.
Yeah, but it's gonna be, uh, at least six, twelve months.
I want to make a determination on these things before we decide how we're gonna proceed with anything that's left.
So we're not moving forward on that right now, because I, I haven't told you how time-consuming they can be. It's not just the grant winners that you have to deal with, it's the rejecters that took the bulk of the time, it's those that were rejected.
My exact reason why we wanted them to do it.
Free Wayne County to do it, and they're willing. Okay, if there is nothing else, Steve, anything from you? All right. We're adjourned.